Whatever you wind up doing is exactly what you should be doing.
And I have not behaved one single day of my life, not one day of my life have I behaved and I'm fine.
I need your help. I can't tell you what it is. You can never ask me about it later and we're gonna hurt some people. Who's guy we're gonna take?
Whatever you wind up doing is exactly what you should be doing.
And I have not behaved.
Hello. Thank you for joining us on the Nikki Madoro Show live on YouTube. Happy Friday or whatever day you may be listening to the show. Excuse the dog noises. Guess we still have a couple more days with Josie, our semi adopted chocolate lab that we are dog sitting for the next couple of days. Uh, but we have a fun show coming up. I do want to let you guys know a programming note. We were really hoping to get Emily Hoven with the San Francisco Chronicle's editorial board on today. To talk about how democratic ideology in California, you know, maybe hindering progress and maybe shooting Democrats here in California in the foot. And giving Republicans a bit of a win. And I really, I was looking forward to this conversation. Unfortunately, Emily texted me early this morning saying that she's not feeling well. So we really do hope to reschedule that interview for next week. And so she's gonna let me know because we always love having Emily on the show. And the interesting thing about the article that's in the San Francisco Chronicle, I think it was in the paper yesterday. Uh, but online was the amount of comments that she was getting from people saying finally, you know, kind of a balanced approach to politics in California. Obviously a state that has a democratic super majority. So really looking forward to that conversation, but that will have have to happen next week because Emily Hoven is a bit under the weather. Uh, but coming up on today's show, obviously it's really hot. I turned off the fan. It's above my head. So uh, we're keeping it a little cool today. I hope you're staying cool. It's going to be extremely hot. In a few moments, we will talk about just how dangerous this heat is. And how surprised are you that basically forcing people to work in this kind of heat, pretty much legal in the United States? Uh, speaking of safety at work, the Teamsters are out in force wanting human drivers behind those big rig trucks. Today, the DMV is gonna be discussing regulations for self-driving trucks. And so we'll get into that. How comfortable are you with it? Because they did like a million miles and any of the accidents that happened were human caused that uh, that had to deal with these self-driving big rig trucks. So I mean, human error is a problem on the roads, but our self-driving trucks, especially the answer. A San Francisco business owner is patrolling his own neighborhood with an imitation gun. I feel like we're getting into Gotham realm over here. I will play you this exclusive report from ABC seven and this guy, you know, yes, he wants to hide his identity, but um, is this the answer? Um, not that he's a vigilante because it is an imitation gun, but kind of taking matters into our own hands. It is Friday, so we do the Friday food segment and we will have a special guest on for our Friday food segment. So you'll want to check that out. Also, there is an interesting story also out of San Francisco regarding the sriracha shortage and what one restaurant is doing about it. So we'll include that in our Friday food segment as well. Uh, Governor Newsom is taking matters also into his own hands when it comes to textbooks. For one Southern California school district. And while on one hand, I think it's wrong for this school district to not want these already. Uh, developed textbooks that everyone else in the state gets to have for their classrooms. Should Newsom do what he's planning to do? So we'll debate that a bit as well. In the second part of the show, it may seem like it's news when it's on the Today Show and all the local news channels. But a lot of these trends and they're being called TikTok trends. These to be YouTube trends or whatever. They're actually fake. These fake stories. Get a lot of legs because you know, news organizations aren't doing their due diligence. One has to do with the jumping out of a boat challenge. Um, and uh, the Alabama law enforcement agency had to come out and and clarify things because that's where it seemed to have stemmed from. And another story that's fake and the Daily Mail, I, as of right now, the last time I checked, has not uh, taken the article down. But the Daily Mail has made Peter Dinklage go start to trend on Twitter and on social media. Because apparently a lot of little people are upset at Peter Dinklage because they're saying because of what Peter Dinklage said. We've lost out on playing the role of the dwarves in the live action Snow White and the Seven Dwarves. I'll play you what Peter Dinklage said, but I could tell you right now, the whole story is fake. But the Daily Mail has posted pictures. They've gone viral and I'm gonna show you some of these. And you really have to take a breath when stories like this come out. So we'll start to debate, you know, who's responsible for this? Is it, is the onus on us? And I believe everything we see on TikTok, YouTube, whatever. Is the onus on journalists to be like, hey? Just because someone says, oh, it's a TikTok trend, go on TikTok. Find out, is it a trend? So we will, we'll be discussing that in the second part of the show. And then of course, it's also Friday. So that means Tim Zico will be joining us. To talk about a bunch of movies that we can watch this coming weekend. But before we do any of that, as you guys know, please make it a habit. Uh, click a thumbs up to show your support for the show. The super chat is also live. I also want to say thank you to those that donate through PayPal. We just got a flea buddy. Uh, that was the name that went through a huge supporter of the show. Very excited about the news that we are moving time slots. If you haven't heard, starting in August, this show will be a morning show, no longer a lunch show. We're still going to do a food segment. I like it on Fridays. I think it makes it fun, but you know, I'll start brainstorming with Kim about what we're gonna do. But it's gonna be more of a wake up kind of talk show instead of having a lunchtime talk show. So it's gonna be starting at nine o'clock, around nine o'clock, starting in August. Uh, but the super chat is live. Please look for the dollar sign and you could throw us a super comment. Thanks sticker for any amount that you want to. But the number one way to support this show and to make sure that we continue it is to become a monthly Patreon subscriber. And I tried to do these, you know, calls for action too much during the show, just really at the beginning and at the end. But we depend on you guys. It's 100% crowdfunded. You don't see any, you know, we don't do any advertising. I know YouTube throws ads up on there. But it's 100% crowdfunded. Believe me, YouTube slash Google takes so much of a cut and Patreon does not in comparison. And so if you really want to support the show, give us a monthly tip. It's not a daily tip. You don't have to pay us every day the amount. But just, you know, what you can throw us, what you can afford, we would really appreciate. So just go to thenikkimadoroshow.com. Thenikkimadoroshow.com. You'll find our Patreon link there and you could donate any amount. And if you could bump it up and you know, throw us a certain amount every single month, we really do appreciate it. Again, our PayPal email is thenikkimadoroshow@gmail.com. And there's merch as well. Go check out the merch shop. There's a lot of fun things on there. Thenikkimadoroshop.com is the website. And uh, if you do again, buy any merch, take a picture, email it to me and I'll throw it up on the show as a huge thank you. So let's get to it. It is hot. Let me look. Some of you have been posting in the comments. So let's go through. So Amy says it is 65 and sunny in San Francisco. Yeah, Amy, we knew it wasn't gonna be toasty in San Francisco. Half Moon Bay also pretty nice, I hear. Uh, Jim 75 and sunny in Woodside. Very, very nice. Meredith is melting in the San Joaquin Valley, but it is that time of year. That is a great attitude. Because it is extremely hot. Uh, Chris says it's 111 degrees in Havasu. Yikes. I mean, at least there's a lake there, right? I'm assuming. Um, Greg Dalton says the Colorado River is where, oh, Havasu is along the Colorado River. I didn't know that it was the Colorado River. I need to update my knowledge about these things. 116 in Palm Springs. What? 116 in Palm Springs. Ouch. Okay. So let me look at my phone and bring my phone out. Let's see current temps on what they're gonna be. So my sister-in-law is heading back. I was telling you guys yesterday, back to Arizona. Right now it's 85 in Morgan Hill, 79 in San Jose. It's 108 degrees already in Queen Creek. Sounds like Tahoe's gorgeous. If you're in Tahoe right now, 75 degrees. It's 90 in Sacramento. Sacramento is among, it's actually the only, Sacramento is the only city in California. That's on the top 10 list of the hottest, um, hottest cities today by heat index. Let me, let's go over the. The heat index, it's going to be nuts today. So the number one is Fort Worth, Texas. Today it's gonna be 112. Phoenix will reach 111, so will Mesa, Arizona. Dallas, Texas, 110. San Antonio, Texas, 109. Austin, Texas, 109. Houston, Texas, 108. Sacramento then comes in at 105. Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 105 and Jacksonville, Florida, 104. So Texas, Arizona, Florida. And then again, Sacramento, California is a, is really, uh, really, really hot, but I'll, I'll say that. I mean, Palm Springs, that's gonna be extremely, extremely hot. 57 in Seaside. There's Justin. What's up, Justin? Um, Vilma's 90 degrees in Vacaville already. That's crazy. I mean, it's just gonna be toasty today. So drink your water, be safe. But again, it's, it may surprise you to know. That forcing people to work in the deadly heat is pretty much legal in the United States. Um, so here in California, there's a great map. On, in the Washington Post, okay? And most, I would say a lot of the country doesn't have any, you know, heat related deaths. They do it per 1 million workers. So like for instance, Kansas, right? They have no safety standard for work, heat safety standard for working outside in the heat. But they also had no heat deaths for 1 million workers between 2017 and 2022. Okay? So places like that, Colorado, Utah, even Nevada, which is kind of surprising, you know, because Nevada and parts of Nevada obviously can get hot. They haven't had any heat deaths. Oregon though, um, they do have a heat safety standard. It's mandatory water, rest and shade. They've had 1.17 deaths of 1 million workers. So California, we also have mandatory water, rest and shade. Point five uh, death, heat deaths per 1 million. Well, let's look at some of the states that have the, the higher deaths. Nebraska. Josie, please. Nebraska, no safety standard. 1.97 deaths, heat deaths for 1 million workers, among the highest. Oklahoma, 2.26 deaths. No safety standard. Louisiana, no safety standard, 1.9. Arkansas, no safety standard, 2.1. Texas, no safety standard, 1.12. West Virginia, no safety standard, 1.35. I was, uh, again, my sister-in-law was telling me her husband, he has a new job and it makes him work out in the heat. And so what are the bosses? Again, Arizona, a very, very hot state, no safety standard. But they haven't had a lot of heat deaths for 1 million, point three. But they have no safety standard, which it seems insane, right? For a state that is so hot. But she says, her husband was told that if he's too hot, that he needs to acclimate to it. And so for every 20 minutes that he works, he should just go into the car with the AC on for like 10, 15 minutes or so. Do you see the problem with that? I don't think they're paying him overtime to sit in his car. He wants to get his job done. He doesn't want to take it, you know, all these breaks every hour. He wants to just get it done. It's crazy. Uh, Lady Beatrice's Oregon does not have mandatory air conditioning for housing. Okay? Um, Chris says 25 years ago, nobody in the desert worked when it went above 98 degrees. Now I see workers tolling in the sun at noon with a straw hat on. Uh, oh, I love you, Tony. Tony's in San Antonio. We love that you tune in all the time. He says, yes, it's hot here, but having you in my ear, Nikki and Kim makes it a little easier. Great. Thank you. That makes me feel great. Uh, John says, when I lived in Northern Louisiana, would hear reports about deaths every summer, all the deaths in Dallas and Shreveport and other cities. We would get hot and humid there. Yeah, you have to be able to co- to cool down. And when it gets this hot. And I was telling you guys about this yesterday, you know, if you stop sweating, you're in trouble. You're definitely in trouble. Um, I remember my first summer in Sacramento, when me and my husband, when my husband and I moved to Sacramento. One, it was when there was like record rainfall and then that following summer, it was record heat. I remember it's like 111 for so many days straight. And my news truck, cause I worked for KFBK up in Sacramento for many years as a reporter, it went out. I was dying. I was dying until they got, I was like, we're not using that truck anymore. It's way too freaking hot. But the other problem was it didn't cool down overnight. And so, you know, it was just retaining all this heat and then the cement and all the concrete just retains all this heat. And you weren't able to cool down and that's what gets dangerous. It's, you can't just open up the doors and windows and, and, and cool down. It's still hot. I remember going to work, cause that's when I worked the morning shift, four o'clock in the morning. I'm like in shorts and a tank top. It was so freaking hot. So freaking hot. Let's welcome our good friend, Kim McAllister to the show. Now you live in Petaluma. I am assuming it's nice in Petaluma today.
Uh, I see what it says on my phone as far as the temperatures concerned, but I think it's gonna be pretty hot. I, I think it's gonna be in the nineties today.
Oh, you will be reaching up into the nineties. I don't know why I always assume Petaluma is cooler.
It's currently 81.
Oh, okay. So you are, so you're actually even cooler than I am, at least according to my phone, which says it's only 79 in San Jose. So.
It gets windy in the afternoons up here and we're not, I mean, we're maybe, I would say 30 minutes from Bodega Bay. So we do get a little bit of the coastal cooling.
Right, right.
But you could, it's pretty hot. There's a couple of weeks in the summer where we're definitely in the hundreds. So.
Yeah, it's okay. And again, like Amy says, I grew up in Arizona. I never want to deal with that kind of heat again. That is, and I mentioned this yesterday, that's the number one reason. We have a lot of family, not just my sister-in-law. My brother lives out there. I have cousins out there. I have an uncle out there. We have a lot of family in Arizona. But my husband works it outside. He can't, that's just not feasible.
So question, do you, if you had to choose between cold or heat?
You know the answer to that.
Is it 110 or is it 32? What do you pick?
110. I'll, I'll choose the 110.
You take 110?
I don't want to deal with cold. I don't want to bring with the, look, cold brings snow and I don't want snow. That's really what it is. I hate being cold, Kim.
This, if you, if you, if it's cold, you can always put on layers. You can always warm yourself up by a fire. You can always find warmth. If it's hot, you can't take off your skin. I mean, you get to the point where.
Get naked.
Uh, yeah, you're just laying on the bed squirting water in front of a fan, right? I mean, you can't, there's no.
There is such a thing as AC, Kim. People do pay to keep their homes comfortable in the excessive heat.
Conditioning. This is the Bay area. We don't need air conditioning. What are we, a bunch of wimps?
Also 110 degrees in the Bay area. So now if I lived in Arizona, obviously I would need to. Now the terrible thing about Arizona is. It gets so hot, you have to stay inside. I think I've told this story before. My, my brother, his first wife, I'll never forget. We were over at her family's house and she came over and you, you know, when you go to a party, you like bring some beer or some wine. People were arriving with gallons of water. They were just bringing water and water and water, just to have it like outside where we were chilling. That's what they brought. I have passed out from the heat or being like overly hot only a handful of times in my life, because I do, I get overheated really easily, which is surprising that I chose heat. But I'll never forget, I was at my cousin's bar in Arizona. James will attest to this because he was looking at me. And I'm just standing there and it hit me so quickly. I'm looking at him and then it's double and then I was down. And I mean, I was not drinking, I mean, I was not drunk or anything. I, and he's like, are you okay? And it's so embarrassing, but I was like, oh my God, I passed out.
I have never passed out in my life.
Oh, I passed out. I have passed out from the heat twice. I passed out of the most beautiful Taco Bell that there ever, that there is in the Pacifica. I passed out in the middle, yeah, in the middle of that Taco Bell. I'll never forget. I got overheated again. I don't know what I was doing. I just wasn't drinking enough. And I'm walking, I could, clear as day, my best friend Jen was with me and I'm walking to it and I start to feel funny. I look at my friend. I'm like, I don't feel very good. And she's like, okay, let's sit down and get something to eat. And I'm at the counter and I order my food and they hand me my soda. And I remember they handed it to me, but with no straw and I am fading. And I'm like, I'm looking at them like, and I look over and I have to walk all the way. You know, to where the not, you know, the utensils and everything are. And I barely make it there and I put the soda down and I collapsed to the floor. And I wasn't passing, all I remember is waking up, my friend's standing over me and she's like, she's like, she's fine. She's fine. Everybody's back. And she's like, get up. I was like, what happened? Well, yeah, I just had to drink something and I was fine. And then I passed out at a Reagan concert because again. I got overheated and um, yeah, I passed out. Yeah, that's the most beautiful Taco Bell in the world. I passed out in that one.
Taco Bell Pacifica, look at that.
Passes it. It's like, that's where you passed out. I'm like, yes, I know, but yeah.
When we're coming home from a road trip, my kids beg to go to this Taco Bell.
Well, it is pretty and you get, you know, you can get your bean burrito and Mexican pizza and all those sorts of things, but yeah.
Other side, what you don't see is they have an outside seating area on the back side. So it's like you're sitting on the beach eating your Taco Bell.
I mean, what better? What better? Yes, Calvin, that is the most beautiful Taco Bell, I would say, ever. Absolutely. Hands down ever. But again, yeah, I texted my husband today. I was like, you better start drinking your water. You better start, you know, he's like, I am, I am, I am. Yeah. Um, so yeah, if you're, if you're gonna be out in the heat, just be careful. And again, there, here in California, there are mandatory water, rest, shade rules. But for most of the United States, you just have to acclimate to it. Sorry. Tough it up, be hot and, and keep working. Uh, speaking of safety at work, today the, the DMV is going to be going over regulations for self-driving trucks. These are the big rig trucks that you see barreling down the freeway. Uh, I want to play you a little bit of this report from KTVU. Uh, about, you know, the Teamsters joining kind of to protest. The fact that this may be moving a bit too quickly for safety, because we're talking about massive big rigs barreling down the freeway. Let me know in the comments as this is going, how comfortable would you feel if you were driving on the freeway? You look over and there's a big rig with nobody inside.
Teamsters, that's the union, march over to the DMV office for this morning's workshop. Some of those members will actually talk and participate in that conversation. They will ask for a human driver to be present during all trips for any truck heavier than 10,000 pounds. The support in favor of self-driving vehicles took a pause earlier this week. The state's Public Utilities Commission was set to expand Waymo and cruise services in the city. But that vote was just postponed for the second time. People here say because the problems they hear with smaller cars, problems like. These cars sometimes getting in the way of first responder incidents, they are not convinced this technology is ready for heavy duty trucks.
Cause I've driven trucks with new technology. It's not there. People are uncomfortable because they can see what these vehicles do just in test situations. And we want to make sure that it is safe for everybody.
What would it take for you to say the technology is there?
Oh, they have a long way to go.
And I just heard from representatives from Waymo just a few minutes ago. They tell me they are disappointed to hear this delay from a vote from CPUC. Saying that their technology could potentially be lifesaving, pointing out to a fact that in 2022, San Francisco saw one of its highest years in traffic deaths. Now Teamsters here led a fight to make strict regulations part of the law. Right now they are talking about a bill requiring a person to be in self-driving heavy duty trucks. A trained licensed truck driver and all of that just cleared the state's senate transportation committee. It's received support from many lawmakers as well as Mayor London Breed. We'll take it.
So there you go. I mean, and, and John, I want to keep my effing job, obviously. I mean, if you take away truck drivers, they want to keep their job. But he also says, as long as the robot truck isn't on meth like so many truck drivers are, you know, um, I don't know if all of them are, but I think that. There is at least a very stereotype, if not, you know, evidence that they stay awake for a long period of time to make those, you know, quotas and to get there on time.
But I still feel more comfortable with a human being.
Yes, thank you.
Being barreling down the freeway rather than, you know, just a computer. I think you still have to have the person inside, even if they're assisted by technology.
Right.
Don't you feel like there still has to be a person in there?
I would want a person in there. Now again.
I mean, what if it's a tanker truck with like carrying those, you know, those big gas trucks?
Yes, exactly.
Like what if it's that?
It's in and of itself, a big rig is a huge truck. It's barreling down at 70 miles per hour down the freeway. Nancy makes a point that always pops into my mind when we talk about technology and computers. What about hacking? You're telling me that it can never be hacked? No, that's BS. So it can be hacked and then you have a bunch of weapons driving down freeways? No, I don't feel comfortable with that. And I would, I would love to at least see drivers and. I know that we want the drivers to obviously be awake at the same time that the, the trucks are barreling down the freeway. But it would also, I think, ease some of the burden of having to stay fully awake. I don't know. But yeah, I, I would feel more comfortable looking over at a big rig. And uh, seeing a person in that truck. So we'll see what happens. Again, it's been delayed. Um, and obviously Waymo and them are not happy about it, but I don't feel like people are ready emotionally. Uh, I don't think the technology necessarily is there yet for people to go 100% full bore. Sure, go ahead. You can, um, you could do what you want and just have all of these vehicles and trucks out on the road with nobody behind the wheel. Uh, Justin says, my German friend says their trucks in Germany drive themselves on the highway. But when it gets close to the city, the driver has to take over or else the truck pulls over and stops. I mean, but I feel like it's going faster and could obviously impact more cars on the freeway or the highway, right? Um, Calvin says, I think for the highway, self-driving cars need the sensors embedded in the road. I don't believe it's ready yet. Yeah, I don't believe it's ready yet. I, I don't see any problem with slowing this down. I really don't. I, I, I don't see any sort of problem. With slowing it down and making sure that it's absolutely safe, because if it's not. I mean, there's a lot of lives that are, it's like a lot of innocent lives that may not choose to drive on the roads with these quote unquote smart trucks. Uh, one final story before we go to Kim's news. Um, I feel like it's San Francisco. Remember, you know, that kid and how San Francisco turned into Gotham for the little kid.
Yeah, that was good.
That was a good story, right? This one, not so much. I feel like we're, we're coming up with these people that are sick and tired of organized crime in the city of San Francisco. And so they're taking matters into their own hands. ABC seven had this exclusive of this San Francisco business owner. Who dons a costume and a fake gun in order to stop all of these criminals that are breaking into cars and businesses in the city of San Francisco. Just watch this.
He's lived in San Francisco for over 20 years and lately, instead of going by his legal name, people call him.
I'm called Boots, working from outside rather than inside.
Covering his face with a ski mask to protect his identity, Boots walks around his neighborhood Fisherman's Wharf, looking like this. And with a non-lethal weapon on his waist that looks like a gun. His goal is to scare off thieves from breaking into cars.
The criminals are getting to know us. I wouldn't call it an organized anything. It's just concerned citizens. Every day is a small victory. You know, uh, you chase them off from one corner.
For years, he's captured videos of car breakings and now he says frustration led him to take matters into his own hands. He says he's doing it to help the area where he lives and owns a business.
The tourists aren't gonna come here. The business of some people that, you know, have lived here and been here for their entire lives and it's not fair.
According to SFPD's incident data, on average, there are 67 thefts from vehicles every day in San Francisco. Outside of this brunch spot, employees see car breakings on a daily basis.
They just leave all their stuff in there and then boom, shakalaka, less than five seconds, they grab your stuff and they're gone.
Many who work here share a common sense of helplessness.
I'm frustrated too and you can't do anything.
Yesterday, while Boots was walking in the area, SFPD arrested him for brandishing an imitation firearm, which is a misdemeanor.
We don't recommend anyone doing that. We understand everyone's frustration. Officers are frustrated in taking the number of police reports regarding auto burglaries occurring throughout the city. However, there is a system in place to do that.
SFPD says they're sure staffed, but to Boots, even though he was arrested, he viewed this as another victory.
While the police were there, there was nobody getting their car broken into for that half hour.
There's no way to truly know if what he's doing is working. Uh, we met this couple from New York who did the unthinkable.
I see your suitcases in the back. Yes, I guess we're lucky that nothing happened.
Or maybe thieves are noticing.
I mean, that's also the point is that you can't be, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna use the word dumb. Don't be dumb. Don't leave your suitcases in the back, especially if a convertible. Are you freaking kidding? I'm hoping the, the top was up, but I'm just saying like, is this where we're going? Part of me says yes. I think people are going to have to take matters into their own hands. It just needs to be safe because you can imagine this guy, fake gun, face covered. You kind of look just like the guys breaking into businesses and cars and everything like that. So if a police, uh, a policeman or woman shows up. And they don't know who the criminal is and who's the, you know, person trying to stop the criminal, you could see tragedy right around the corner, but yeah.
Yeah. I mean, he stays, what did they say? Well, yeah, I mean, he stays, what did they say? They arrested him for brandishing a fake weapon?
A misdemeanor, yeah.
I mean, he's lucky he hasn't been shot by police walking around with that thing.
Exactly. DJ says, I love this guy as a society. We cannot ignore situations that make us uncomfortable. Um.
I see Dylan behind you. It's the cutest little face sticking right up in the corner. I love it.
Dylan is gonna be my special guest. I was telling you before you came on, Kim, Dylan is my special guest today for Friday food. So he's, he's all set and ready to go. He's very, very excited. Uh, Calvin says, I don't think holster, uh, holstered BB gun counts as brandishing a weapon. I'd let him go. Yeah, but I think that what you don't want is a lot of people carrying, you know, these weapons around because then you don't know who the good guy and the bad guy is. Absolutely. I just don't. I really, really don't. Um, yeah, and, uh, oh yeah, John says, pretty soon you're gonna get someone who's going to meet these thieves with violence. This guy isn't, but others will. Yeah. And that's the, that's the scary part. Um, okay. So we're gonna do, uh, Kim's news when we come back. It is Friday, so I do Friday food. I will explain why my son Dylan is hiding behind me. Not very well. Everyone sees you. Um, so he will join me for the Friday food segment. We will talk about something that we made together. Uh, there's also a San Francisco restaurant has an answer to the sriracha shortage, so we'll include that as well. And I do want to touch on Governor Newsom taking matters into his own hand after a Temecula school district says no to a textbook that mentions Harvey Milk. That's all coming up after Kim's news.
Now from around the world to up your street, the Nikki Madoro Show presents news czar Kim McAllister.
Let's start with this case out of New York today. This is some, uh, some big news, some news that's been a long time coming. Police say they have a suspect in New York's long unsolved Gilgo Beach serial killings. At least 10 sets of human remains found along Long Island near or along Gilgo Beach. That's since 2010. Well, reports say 59-year-old suspect Rex Huerman has been arrested. He has pleaded guilty, uh, not guilty, rather, pleading not guilty to six counts of murder. He was arrested in Manhattan in connection with these murders. And again, pleading not guilty, but finally a suspect arrested in the Gilgo Beach serial killings. As Nikki was mentioning, yeah, it's, and sorry that I clicked on it prematurely, but it is a record-breaking heat wave affecting millions of Americans. From the West Coast to the Gulf Coast, we now have more than 90 million people under heat warnings and advisories today. And the temperature is expected to shoot up to anywhere between 105 to 115 from the Great Valley of California to the desert of the Southwest. A potential UPS strike could be the costliest one in history. You can see here, a hot UPS driver with no AC in the truck. This is one of the things they're fighting for. According to a Michigan-based study, the economy would take a $7 billion hit, even if a UPS strike only lasted 10 days. Phew, that's a big hit. The 340,000 workers plan to walk out July 31st unless a new contract can be reached between UPS and the Teamsters Union. Republicans in Congress are up in arms over President Biden's order authorizing the Pentagon to mobilize thousands of reserve troops for duty in Europe, interestingly enough. Uh, the Texas Senator Ted Cruz is calling the move reckless and dangerous. Utah Senator Mike Lee claims President Biden is walking the US up to the line of war with Russia as the war in Ukraine continues. But speaking of President Biden, well, his reelection campaign is reporting $72 million in fundraising for the second quarter. The Biden campaign, the Democratic National Committee and Joint Fundraising Committees also reported having $77 million in cash on hand. That's more than the total raised by both campaigns of former President Trump and Florida Governor Ron DeSantis, the leading GOP candidate. So at least there's some money rolling into President Biden. In Alameda County, the District Attorney Pamela Price is facing a recall effort. It's organized by people who say she's just letting too many violent criminals, uh, out and off the hook in Alameda County. And she was elected, kind of very similar to Chesa Boudin on this platform that pledged to follow progressive criminal justice reforms in Alameda County. So that was her whole platform anyway. Uh, one of the pillars of her restorative justice policies, the theory lengthy prison sentences don't create safer communities. And what she said is if putting people in prison for 75 years made our country more safe, then we'd be the safest country and the safest country in the world. Uh, this week, a committee called Save Alameda for Everyone, or SAFE, initiated their Recall DA Price campaign. They filed paperwork to get her out of office, so. Uh, and here's a good uplifting story for you. This Bakersfield woman has her wedding ring back thanks to a scuba enthusiast. His name is Merman Mike. The woman lost her wedding ring in Bass Lake, uh, last weekend during her family's visit to Madera County. That's just north of Fresno. She contacted Michael Pelly, who goes by Merman Mike, and she contacted him on social media, asking for his help. Well, he gave it. He found the ring at the bottom of the lake after a couple hours, then dove back into the lake to remove all the garbage that he found on the bottom of the lake too. Pelly says he loves to dive and look for lost treasures and he says he doesn't charge for his services.
Oh, I love that story. He's cool box.
Yeah. Um, and lastly, pro golfer Rory McIlroy says he wouldn't play for LIV Golf if it was the last place on earth. McIlroy made his feelings known yesterday after the first round of the Scottish Open. He says he and other players were blindsided by the Saudi-backed golf organization's merger with the PGA Tour, but he has become apathetic toward all the noise around it. So he's saying.
Good.
Uh, I'm Kim McAllister and this is the Nikki Madoro Show.
Thank you, thank you, Kim. All right. So as you can see, right here, squeezing in next to me, I have a special guest. It's my son Dylan. Say hi to everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
The reason why my son Dylan is here is because.
Looks like he's got summer Hawaii hair.
Well, he, I swear to God, Kim, he looked like. Time in, in Hawaii. But since we've come back, we've been talking a lot about eating and eating healthier, right? And so I want to play you, so we decided to have more salads. He, 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 on his own, Kim, on his own, we're driving in the car. And he goes, I really want to eat healthier, mom. How do we eat healthier? How do we eat less fast food? Why, why do, what made this come to your mind, Dylan? Explain.
Um, I wanted to learn to be healthier early on in life so that it would help me later on.
Because why?
Because eating healthy helps a lot of things.
So he also has been working out every day with my dad. My dad's a total gym rat, so Dylan's been going with to the gym. And so we were driving, was it last week, I think, last Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, I was like, okay, well, let's try to incorporate, because he wants to eat more fruits and vegetables. And I was like, well, you know salads are a great way to incorporate vegetables because you can put a bunch of stuff in it. You can make yummy dressings. And, and that's how I like to eat a lot of my vegetables. So I showed him this Instagrammer that I follow. And I'm gonna play you the video right now. This is the salad that we made. I've been watching, looking at this salad all the time. And this is what we made. Here we go.
Sam, one of my top favorite salmon recipes ever.
My husband's not a salmon fan, but he always devours this one.
Sesame, ginger, salmon, and vermicelli power bowl topped with a bang bang sauce. Toss the salmon chunks and sear them on each side for about two minutes. Next, we mix up our noodles with this quick sauce and assemble our bowls. Add our omami, cucumber, carrots, avocado, and a creamy bang bang sauce.
She talks really fast.
Yeah, she does. Well, it's Instagram. But anyways, so this is what's on, this is the, the recipe. But I am telling you, if you look, and I know that people, it's small, but the salmon, it says for the salmon, the sauce for this salmon is so freaking good. You don't need to make the whole power bowl.
Is that what the bang bang sauce is?
No, the bang bang sauce is like yogurt, mayonnaise, sweet chili, and sriracha. Okay? But the salmon, it's like this glaze and it's sesame oil, salt, pepper, grated ginger, a little bit of maple syrup and olive oil. That's it. I am telling you, I put this on salmon. I have put this on shrimp. And it's so easy. I mean, I, I have, I, I like to cook Asian food, so I have like rice vinegar. I have sesame oil, all that sort of stuff. So we followed this entire recipe and here are our bowls. So this was, I think this was mine. Oh, we both put the furukaki on it. So furukaki is like this, the kind of umami kind of seasoning. It's the black flakes that you see right there. It's a bomb. So this, this one was mine. Yeah. And the other one was.
That's pretty healthy eating right there, you guys.
Right? So what did you think of the bowl? Cause he also, you hadn't eaten everything in this bowl before, had you?
I had never tried cucumber or avocado.
Really?
Have eaten carrots either.
Yeah. So he has been eating a lot healthier. So.
You've never had guacamole before?
Have you ever had guacamole? No.
Wow.
I know. So he's tried to try new food. Exactly. So now explain to me what you said yesterday. For the past two days, my son has been at my in-laws' house because my sister-in-law's in town with her daughter, his cousin, and so they've been spending time together. So what was one of the first things you told me when we were alone yesterday together?
I was eating really unhealthy.
Oh.
What did you eat? What did you eat?
So yesterday, me, my cousin, my sister and my aunt went to Great America.
Okay.
And I ate all the sweets. I had funnel cake, ice cream, Dippin' Dots, fudge. I had chicken tenders, pizza and fries.
I'm like, who eats that much food at one time?
Dylan does.
Exactly. I love that he came home. He's like, mom, I ate so unhealthy. It was like, you know, a special treat here and there is not bad. And then he laundry lists that whole list of food. I'm like, okay, well, maybe it's a bit much.
So here's the question I have for Dylan. How did you feel at the end of the day after eating all that stuff? Versus how did you feel after you got finished with your salad that you made yourself, that you had cucumbers and avocado for the first time? Did you feel better after eating that, that good stuff?
I definitely felt more guilty after eating all that unhealthy food.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, okay, go ahead.
I definitely felt more guilty after eating all that food.
What do you mean by guilty?
I felt just like guilty after eating very healthy and having a good, like, plan to eat healthy and just ditching it in a day.
Oh, so you felt like you made a deal with yourself and broke it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm proud of you.
They say mistakes happen and that the minute you, you make a mistake like that, you just kind of think to yourself, all right, it doesn't mean that I can't start back on my plan right at this very moment, right? So you just get right back on the, as they say, the saddle on the horse and keep on riding and doing the good things. Yeah.
Good job, Dylan. Well, thank you for joining us on the show.
Thank you for letting me come on.
Have a good one, bud. I love you.
Love you guys. Bye.
Bye. Bye Dylan. We love you too.
Aw, isn't he just the sweetest? Uh, he's 12, actually. That's my 12-year-old boy. Yes.
It made me a little sad when he said he felt like he failed himself because I know that feeling and I, I just feel like it's so cool that he has, um, a plan and he wants to try these new things and, and he's working out and doing the best he can. So I want him to feel good about that and not like he's failed himself.
Well, he's such a goal setter. And I think that's what he means like by the guilt. It's like, I set this goal. Like he wants to work out with my dad every day. He didn't go this morning because he was exhausted from, from, you know, the past couple of days. He just wanted to sleep in. It was like, it's no big deal. Like just go the next day and the next day. And I am definitely one. Cause we were also talking in the car and I was like, the number one way that people succeed in their goal is to have someone holding them accountable. And I was like, so you are, so we made a, we made a pact, him and I, that we're gonna try not to eat too much fast food.
Okay.
And you just make more meals at home. Cause when you make meals at home, you know, then you have control over what's in it and everything like that. And so today, the reason, the reason why I'm actually not eating something physically right now is guess what today's national day is?
French fries.
And macaroni and cheese.
Oh, okay.
I was like, ah, one, I'm trying really hard not to do DoorDash or anything like that, which I would have had to, right? And two, like macaroni and cheese is the last thing I really want to eat at noon. Now, I totally could have. I could have taken a couple of bites and shared it with the rest. Well, my husband, because my kids don't eat cheese. But it was just one of those things. I was like, no, we should start promoting what we're trying to do. And so I'm not saying I'm never gonna have delicious yummy yummy, not good for you food on the Friday food segments, but I just, I thought it'd be great to have Dylan come on here and kind of share. It's so hard.
I have to say that I'm very surprised that this is his first tasting of avocado and cucumbers. I remember when my kids were babies mashing up avocado that they would eat it as baby food.
I'm sure he has had avocado as a baby food, like I chunked it up, but him making a conscious choice, like I'm going to put that on my plate and eat it. No.
Right.
No, no, no. And we, we're definitely one of those, it's on the table, offer it. He eats his vegetables. He's more of a broccoli kind of, and corn, which is, you know, starchy. Um, type of person. He's still very picky in that aspect, but so I'm just going full force with this. Let's have salads.
Good job.
You want to try different things. He tried mango for the first time yesterday because we're trying to try new fruit. I love, I grew up eating mango. I love mango.
Julia loves is they have bags of dried mango. I think they have them at Costco.
Yeah.
And there's this dried mango and that's her go-to snack. She loves it.
It's so good. Name it. How do you hate avocado? I, I love avocado. So my go-to lunch this week has been, you know, Dave's Killer Bread, everything bagel. I get half of the everything bagel because I only eat half at a time. I put a half to the whole, depending on the size of an avocado with slap your mama seasoning on it. Have you ever tried slap your mama seasoning? So freaking good. It's a little spicy. So good. It'll make you slap your mama. Uh, so I put that on it and then I put a slice of turkey and some mustard and some chopped up cucumbers for crunch. Oh my God, it is so good. It is so, so good. So, you know, you could eat well, but I love avocado. I can eat avocado every single day. And yeah, Kim agrees with me. I put slap your mama on everything. So do I. It's great. It's, it has all the seasonings in it. You don't even need extra salt. Um, all right. Another thing that was part of that bowl though, and the bang bang sauce was sriracha. So we've been talking about this shortage of sriracha, right? That's been going on. Well, apparently there is a, uh, if you're in San Francisco or close to it, I'm not driving my ass to San Francisco just to get a bottle of sriracha. But there is a restaurant where you can go and get a bottle, full bottle of sriracha. Uh, here's the report, uh, from ABC seven.
This shortage happened again. So then, oh my God, it's crazy. It's like 200 bucks? No way, right?
Yes, Aina Jungin Lee is referring to the current price of sriracha sauce online and at some locations across the country. But you can see sriracha is one thing that Jungin Lee has plenty of at her San Francisco Korean restaurant, The Corner Store.
We currently have about 75 bottles.
Because when prices dropped earlier this year.
I purchased boxes of sriracha. And then, oh my God, what I'm gonna do with it? You know, I will come up with something.
So she decided, why not give them away to those who purchased this new spicy hamgyam dish, which her parents are now masters at cooking, along with her brother.
We have a lot of authentic Korean food made by Mama An and Papa Lee and my brother. We have a free bottle of original sriracha for you.
You can also choose to buy two of these soju bottles and get free sriracha, but I chose food.
So this is the entree that you can get that will get you a bottle of sriracha sauce. Now as for the taste though. Spicy, but it is.
This dish will run you about $75, but it feeds four to five people. And Jungin Lee, who runs the corner store with her husband Nick, says the deal lasts until the sriracha is gone.
We're launching hot food with a hot sauce and hot place for fun.
So would you go to the corner store? That's the name of the restaurant in San Francisco to buy a $75 meal that serves four to five people? So it's not too bad just to get a bottle of sriracha?
Um, I'm, I'm not gonna drive all the way to San Francisco for it, but also we're not big sriracha people at my house.
I love sriracha. She says, how long is a bottle of sriracha gonna last you? In my house, and I'm not even exaggerating, at the most three months, a big bottle.
Oh, wow. We don't even have that. We don't keep that stored here.
Oh, it is, it is a mainstay. I put it on everything. Um, but I'm not, I'm, I'm dealing with the shortage. I mean, I, I have a bottle of sriracha that I got at Safeway that's, you know, their own kind of recipe. It's not the same. It does add spice to it, which is what I'm looking for. Justin, I am telling you, if you really have an unopened bottle of sriracha and you don't want it, you could make serious bank. Not even kidding. I mean, serious as in it's ridiculous because you could buy a bottle for what, four bucks or something? Uh, when it's in, when it's in stock. Um, but 75 bottles, she bought, she was smart. Uh, when it's in, when it's in stock. Um, but 75 bottles, she bought, she was smart. 75 bottles? She shouldn't give it away. And I'm, and again, just to kind of tie in with our vigilante slash Batman guy story of earlier. Now she's blasted to everybody that she has very valuable bottles of sriracha at her store. I really hope that that doesn't lead to an, oh my God, unexpected burglary at her store. Yeah, exactly. Um, let's see. Oh, Liz's my daughter would. She can't live without it. Last time I bought the largest bottle and gave it to her. The largest bottle is the only bottle I buy. We use it on everything. I drizzle it in soups, um, on shrimp, on if I make zucchini, I do, I just, I love it. It's so, it's so, so yummy. And there isn't any sort of replacement. And Star said, I tried Trader Joe's sriracha, not a replacement. It has vinegar and garlic and it's watery. So it's closer to Tabasco with Tabasco sauce with garlic with a hint of less heat. Yeah. They, the, the rooster sauce, the hui fong is, they've got it locked. They've got that recipe. It is so. And when I go to like Hawaiian barbecue places normally have it as well. They don't have it. They're not giving it out. Um. A square says, I like sriracha on Asian food, but never tacos or enchiladas. No, I like tapatio. Um, if I'm gonna have it like on a taco or something like that, that's the hot sauce that I like that. And then for Tabasco, I really only put Tabasco on jambalaya, clam chowder, that sort of thing. Uh, not, I would never use sriracha in something like that. Wes is here in Florida. Publix ha- only has Texas Pete Chaw Sauce, which is like sriracha, but not the same. Taste is good, but it's a weird texture. And Neiman says it's too spicy for me. It's not that spicy. But if you take sriracha, oh, another thing that I like sriracha with? Just continue our food segment here. Does anybody like steamed artichokes? You mix a little bit of mayo with sriracha and slap your mama seasoning and dip the, the leaves of the avocado, of the artichoke in that. Mm.
I love an, I love an artichoke, but not a spicy artichoke.
What do you put? Do you bake, do you bake it or something? What do you do with your artichokes?
Steam it.
Okay.
And um, then my mom has a concoction. She'll whip up its mayonnaise and lemon juice and a little bit of pepper. Yeah, I um, I was told that, and I didn't realize this being a native Californian, that people in other states think we're weird for eating thistles. That it's kind of a California thing to eat artichokes is what I understand. Yeah.
Interesting. I mean, you have to know how to eat it, right? I mean, obviously you don't eat the core part with all the.
I think in other states, like they might make artichoke hearts maybe in a bottle. But they don't buy like the fresh artichoke and eat the, you know, straight the leaves. Yeah. I guess that's a California thing. I don't know.
That's interesting because I grew up, my parents, I eat artichokes all the time and they did kind of the thing that you were talking about lemon, butter, or just straight mayonnaise. My parents would just do straight mayonnaise. I can't do straight mayonnaise. I'm not a huge mayonnaise person. But a naoli with something else, you know, mayonnaise with something in it, I am all about. And I like it spicy. Um, but I didn't start eating artichokes until later in life because I was similar to like my daughter. I was a very, very picky eater. I did not really eat a lot of vegetables, broccoli, kind of corn, staple, things like that, but not. I'm way more adventurous with vegetables now as an adult, which is good. Um, a Karen says an artichoke is $6 in Hawaii. I used to love them with butter or dill mayo.
Six dollars for one artichoke?
Well, it matters if it's in season. I could see six dollars for an artichoke when it's out of season, but then I don't buy it. Like artichokes are best, big, tight. You know a good artichoke. If you squeeze it and it feels hollow inside or it's open, like no.
Yeah.
Uh, the artichoke festival bomb, like fried artichokes. It's just, I just like to eat artichokes all day. It's absolutely delicious. I'm sorry. But yeah. Sriracha, I'm really, really hoping um, comes back. Um, all right, let's squeeze this story. And Governor Newsom is threatening action against the Temecula School District. So the Temecula School District has banned a textbook because it references Harvey Milk. Uh, the school board. Milk is a pedophile. Uh, and Governor Newsom is not having it. So here is what, here's the announcement that the governor put on his Twitter page. You guys tell me, should he do this? I mean, because it's basically us that's doing it, right? I mean, when he says California is going to do this, it's us. We're doing this. Is this a waste of money? So here again, here again is Governor Newsom with his announcement that he made on Twitter.
Everybody, it's Gavin Newsom, father of four, two young elementary school kids. And I want to talk to the parents of the Temecula School District. Uh, we've been paying close attention, as I know you have, particularly with school uh, coming up on August 14th. Uh, you're worried, I'm worried, we're all worried uh, about access to information, access to uh, the latest social studies books that are being made available, quite literally to hundreds of thousands of kids all throughout the state of California, but are being denied to the kids in the Temecula district. Uh, that social studies book is being censored by the local school board. Um, I know that's created a lot of anxiety. The last thing we need is more anxiety and more stacking of stress. So I want you to know that we're moving forward, the state is moving forward and purchasing and procuring those social studies books. Your kids have the freedom to learn and you have the freedom to access those books, the same books that hundreds of thousands of other kids throughout the state are accessing. So rest assured, we'll be sending those books down in very short order. And let's do our best, all of us, to soften the edges uh, of these debates and to make sure that we provide accurate information and the freedom for our kids to learn. That after all is the California way.
Okay. So what do you think about what he just said there? Now he's obviously not getting a lot of support necessarily on Twitter. Uh, one person wrote, we do not co-parent with the government, although you do, you do. So.
Where do you think your kids spend most of their day? At school?
Um, but then somebody said, the people of Temecula voted for the school board members. They wanted to make the, those decisions. You have no right to step in and override their decision. You're abusing your position as an elected leader and it's despicable. Although the same argument she's making about the school board, you could make about Governor Newsom because we elected a governor to make these decisions, right? So I mean, it's, should we be sending textbooks to a school district that may just let them sit and collect dust? I mean, I can imagine the Temecula School District saying, okay, thanks for sending us books we're not gonna use. And so should we, the taxpayer, be footing the bill for something that's not going to get used? On the other hand, I can imagine people within the Temecula School District don't agree with the school board's decision. So should they be uh, offered the alternative to have the textbook? You know, yeah, you can hold the textbook, but if the teacher's not gonna teach what's inside of it, well, good as it is.
Isn't there state mandated, like you have to teach certain things? Yeah, that, I mean, we, we can send the books to them and they actually can be forced to have to use it, right? Isn't that how it works or no?
Well, I mean, I don't know how far down that goes. I really don't. I don't know. Like, are they gonna be fined for this? Um, you know, the Board of Education, so this is what um, I guess the school board president said. They said, uh, after the government's statements, they said Newsom was mischaracterizing the board's actions. They said the Board of Education of the Temecula Valley Unified School District did not ban a book at its meeting. Instead, the Board of Education determined not to adopt as curriculum, a history, social science program for district-wide use that had been part of a pilot study conducted by the district. He said there were multiple concerns, not just about milk, but about whether the community was properly engaged in the discussion and whether the needs of English learners and special ed students were, were being addressed. The new curriculum will be presented to the board in a couple of days, actually, at its July 18th meeting. He also said statements that the district would not have enough books are untrue because arrangements have already been made to obtain books based on the existing district curriculum. So I guess they wanted to make changes. It was a pilot study. It would include this new book and Temecula was saying, nah, we don't want that. There's not been enough discussion and we don't, we don't want it. Now, here's the thing, and I'm seeing a lot of you talking about Harvey Milk, uh, you know. Amy says, Mike, he goes to Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. That's gonna be hard to ban there. John asked, was Harvey Milk a pedophile? Um, you know, look, there is a segment or a section of Harvey Milk's history in which apparently he lived with an underage boy for a while. It was obviously not included in probably the movie Milk. I have no idea. Here's the thing. When we're talking about Harvey Milk, what are we talking about? You know, what are we teaching? Are, are, are we, are we, are we taking classroom time out to talk about Harvey Milk's uh, personal relationships? Or are we talking about his fight for LGBT rights, right? I mean, you can go through history uh, and, and, and talk about some of the things that would be frowned upon, right? In, in, in society. And so that's my point. When we talk about Harvey Milk and we're speaking bad about everything that he did, I don't understand that way of looking at it. I mean, every time we talk about any sort of person from history, how much time do we spend on the good versus the bad? And that's the balance. Um, I just, this piecemeal education, you know, where certain people are elected to the school board and make decisions like that. We really have to question the motivation of these people for even being on the school board. And then they'll cry about the fact that, oh, we don't have enough teachers. People are leaving. They don't want to deal with your BS. They don't. They just want to teach kids, history, English, whatever. And some school boards are getting in the way of that. And I, you know, I can't imagine being a teacher right now or even going into the teaching profession right now. I applaud each and every one of you that stay in the profession or get into the profession because I can't imagine the headaches it takes with some people who probably never even picked up the textbook or the regular book or what have you and have such strong opinions because of something that was said on a TV show or that they read online that was skewed a certain way. On that note, coming up after Kim's news, we're going to talk about fake news. Real fake news and how it filters down to all of us. We're all guilty of it. One of it has to do with TikTok challenges. And I'm guilty of this, Kim. You know, every time I hear about whether it's real or, I always make sure my kids know, look, if you see this, if you think that it's a good idea, if you think that other people are doing it, don't be that. Well, one of them has to do with the latest quote unquote TikTok challenge, the boating challenge, right? And it made a day show and the whole point of it was people were jumping off moving speedboats and.
Breaking their necks, right?
Fake. Totally fake story. Uh, and then also Peter Dinklage, you know, the guy from um, game. He's trending on Twitter. And so I saw his name. I was like, why the hell is Peter Dinklage? I love him. Love him as an actor.
Yeah.
Why is he trending? And he is being blamed for um, making it so seven little people missed out on being part of the live action remake of Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs. Fake story, but we'll get into it and we'll see how it goes and, and how these things happen. Uh, make sure you guys click the thumbs up button to show your support of the show. We'll talk about all of that. Plus, Tim Zika has our movie reviews in the second part of our show, next on the Nikki Medoro Show.
Now from around the world to up your street, The Nikki Medoro Show presents news czar Kim McAllister.
Let's start with student debt. Uh, this is kind of a bit unexpected, but more than 800,000 student loan borrowers will have their debt forgiven by the Biden administration. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona saying this morning, the debt relief is a result of fixes to the student loan system's income-driven repayment plans. Under those plans, borrowers get their remaining debt canceled after they've made payments for at least 20 years. House Speaker Kevin McCarthy says radical programs are being eliminated from within the military with the passage of the annual defense bill. Here's a picture of Mr. McCarthy for you. Uh, the House passed its version of the National Defense Authorization Act today, which includes restrictions on abortion, diversity and inclusion programs and gender transition procedures for service members. The legislation cleared the House in a near party line vote. Democrats accused the Republicans of using the defense package as a way to push their policy agenda on social issues. One key amendment to the NDAA would reverse the Pentagon's policy to reimburse travel expenses for service members who travel out of state to access abortion care. The Senate will have to soon pass its own version of the NDAA as well. Here we go. Another day, another busload of migrants arrives in the Los Angeles area from Texas. That according to Mayor Karen Bass. The bus dropped off the asylum seekers at Union Station yesterday afternoon. The same destination that two other transports from the Lone Star State uh, did in recent weeks. Mayor Bass says her office was made aware of the bus Wednesday. She activated their plan to care for the migrants upon arrival. A coalition of organizations welcomed 35 travelers. They will provide resources and advice. Texas Governor Greg Abbott has bussed more than 23,000 migrants to cities across the country. In Hollywood, there's some big doings going on. Of course, you've heard about the actors' strike. Film and television production now grinding to a halt. The union representing 160,000 actors going on strike, joining the Hollywood writers who have been on strike for about two and a half months now. The biggest entertainment shutdown in almost 40 years means all work covered by SAG actors must stop, as well as film and television productions shutting down. The strike though goes well beyond the screen as SAG-AFTRA members are now unable to attend premieres, do interviews for finished projects, attend award shows, film festivals, or promote their projects through social media. Comic Con, arguably the biggest fan entertainment event in the world, will also not be attended by SAG-AFTRA members. It's a big deal for a lot of people who bought tickets thinking they were gonna see their favorite actors or characters and nope. The unions want more compensation and safeguards against the use of artificial intelligence, which they fear will replace human actors and writers. But yeah, no SAG-AFTRA members at Comic Con this time around. In Stockton, police are creating a priority plan for emergency calls. Police department officials say those who experience auto burglary, theft, vandalism, they have to file an online report or call the non-emergency line. Officers will still respond to crimes happening at the moment, but violent crimes and property crimes are gonna take precedence that are happening right now at this very moment. Otherwise, non-emergency line for you. Unless it's a big, you know, a big thing that's happening now. PetSmart is agreeing to nearly one and a half million dollar settlement with seven California counties. So this is Ventura County District Attorney Eric Nasserenko, who's announcing the settlement on yesterday. Uh, PetSmart accused of charging customers different prices at checkout than what was advertised in the aisle. Oh, you can't do that. That's a violation of California's business and professions code. The complaint against PetSmart filed in Santa Cruz County Superior Court on behalf of the district attorneys of Santa Cruz, Ventura, Los Angeles, San Diego, Contra Costa, Sonoma and Marin County. So PetSmart uh, agreeing now to nearly one and a half million dollars to settle this one. And some information about Lisa Marie Presley as well. We now have her cause of death being revealed. And here is what they are saying. Uh, Los Angeles County coroner announcing Presley died from complications resulting from a small bowel obstruction. The toxicology report found therapeutic levels of two opioids in her system, one of which was used to treat uh, an opioid disorder. It also found trace amounts of an antipsychotic drug. Presley was prescribed opiates just months before uh, she died after undergoing plastic surgery. The drugs can sometimes cause constipation, which may have contributed to her complications. The bowel obstruction was caused by adhesions that developed after her gastric bypass surgery years ago. I'm Kim McAllister and this is the Nikki Medoro Show.
What is so sad about that? I mean, that is just really, you know, you can have complications from, you know, I would say at this point, pretty common surgery.
But not risk-free, you know?
No, it's not risk-free. Exactly. So people are like, I'll just have the surgery. Uh, you know, maybe you should think twice about that. Getting yourself cut open always comes with some risks. All right. Um, okay. So speaking of risks, right? When you hear about stupid TikTok challenges, right? It used to be YouTube, whatever way things go viral, right? There's always this, this idea that, oh my God, it's gonna spread like wildfire. The kids are gonna start doing, you know, these stupid dangerous trends or challenges. According to the Washington Post, throughout 2017 and 2018, news outlets falsely claimed that YouTube videos that were encouraging children to snort condoms, set themselves on fire and eat toxic Tide Pods. It was fake. In 2019, national media outlets, most notably the Today Show, claimed Facebook, WhatsApp and YouTube were spreading the Momo challenge in which an image of a terrifying sculpture would appear on a child's cell phone screen and pressure them to kill themselves. But the whole thing was a hoax. There was never any evidence the challenge ever existed on YouTube, Facebook or WhatsApp. Zero deaths were reported. The image cited as Momo is actually a sculpture titled Mother Bird. Do you err on the side of caution, Kim, anyway, when you read stories about these types of challenges? Are you like, don't be a moron and eat Tide Pods? Or do you just say, no, that can't possibly be true?
I think now that we maybe know that there, these stories are being erroneously reported, that we say. that we say, here's a story, we don't know if it's accurate, but in case it is, don't do this, right? Although, I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I think, I hope that people will be more careful in their reporting after that.
And that's the point, because in all honesty, some of these things, it shouldn't be this difficult to figure out. It really shouldn't, because one of the ways that you can do it is to trace it all the way back to its roots. So for instance, this boat challenge. So the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency stated that there was this ABC 3340 report that drowning deaths, recent drowning deaths were connected to a TikTok challenge. Okay. I'm going to play you a little bit of the news report that shows that the ALA, the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, as it's called, is pushing back and saying, wait a minute, wait a minute, is that really what was going on here? So here you go.
Alabama Law Enforcement Agency released a statement today in regards to a story that aired here on ABC 3340 last Monday. In the story, we spoke with Childersburg Rescue Squad. We were told in the last six months, the rescue squad had responded to four drownings that were easily avoidable. They were doing a TikTok challenge. However, Aaliyah today says its Marine Patrol Division does not have any records of boating or marine-related fatalities in Alabama that can be directly linked to TikTok or a trend on TikTok. We reached back out to Captain Jim Dennis for reaction to Aaliyah's statement. Captain Dennis says he stands by the information provided to ABC 3340, adding, Aaliyah may not have all the documents related to those incidents, but when asked to provide dates of when these incidents happened, Captain Dennis declined to provide them. We have more on our website.
You're muted. While you unmute yourself, there you go.
I mean, so what do you think about this? I mean, on one hand, you're, you're interviewing someone that is supposed to be the point of contact, right? They're blaming it on a TikTok challenge. You're quoting them and then all of a sudden they're like, wait a minute, what TikTok challenge? How many people have done this? And when you dig beneath the surface, you find out none. Nope, no people have been dying, uh, uh, by jumping off of these boats. They put out a statement, they said, the information related to the news outlets was incorrect, as that reporter had just said. When they reached out to the Today Show, the show, uh, they just relayed Aaliyah's statement. But I mean, when you're talking about the Today Show, right? A national, that's like Good Morning America, right? I mean, it's a national program. Now, is it hard to imagine kids doing this? Of course not. But apparently if you go on TikTok, this jump boat, boat jumping challenge, it's not going viral. And then even the accounts that do have videos that purportedly show people doing this challenge, it's got like 26 views or something like that.
So in a time when former President Trump and conservative, because of what he said about the media, and mostly conservatives are distrustful of the media, I think it's very important for us to make sure that what we're reporting is right. And if it isn't, to come back and correct ourselves as that has been done in this story. But it's even more important now to make sure we get it right. And so a stupid story like a TikTok challenge, you know, now people are going to be, my fear is that people will be pointing to that, look, they can't even get that story right about some dumb TikTok challenge. How can they get the story about Vladimir Putin and what's going on in Ukraine on the other side of the world?
Right.
Or how can they get it right, the story about it being a fake election? Or how can they get, on and on it goes. And so that's why it's critical when, you know, obviously everyone makes mistakes, but it's important to come back out and, and say, you know, we reported this in error.
Yeah. Or just dig a little bit. I mean, especially with trends and viral videos, go see if it's viral. It's, it shouldn't be that difficult, you know? But it also, the onus is on, I think us as well. I'll never forget, somebody that's close to me was insisting, insisting that students couldn't bring their lunch in paper bags because it made, uh, people feel bad. And I kept, and I was looking at this, what I would say, smart person, and then said, where on Fox News is this happening? I, and I'm just calling out Fox News because it's the number one news channel and, and people get ridiculous ideas that way. And so they latch onto this, you can't say this word because the woke's going after it. And then I just say it, like the war on Christmas. There is no war on Christmas, zero war on Christmas. And yet every single holiday, because we say holiday, because educated people know that more than Christmas is celebrated in December, right? So we say happy holidays because we don't know what you celebrate to be inclusive. They're like, oh, you're going woke, it's Christmas. Not for everybody, moron. And so it pisses me off that people go, you can't even say Christmas, you can't even say Merry Christmas. And then I stand outside my front door and I go Merry Christmas. And I'm like, look, nobody cares. Nobody cares. Wish somebody Merry Christmas. This, this faux outrage is BS. And so, I don't know, it drives me nuts. And I kind of feel like this is the road that this is going down where, oh, it's on TikTok and I saw it happening. And that takes me to Peter Dinklage. And I, I, I might be breaking this to you guys because you probably have seen it if you're on Twitter. So Peter Dinklage was trending. And the reason why Peter Dinklage was trending is because of an interview he gave on the WTF podcast with Marc Maron, okay? I'm going to play you a clip because I wanted to make sure you guys heard it, because I know sometimes my sound is low. This was what Peter Dinklage said about this new live action Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs that's coming out soon, okay? Now, obviously the name of the darn story is Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, okay? But Peter Dinklage had a bit of a problem with it, given the fact that they thought that they were being so progressive by making a Latina actress Snow White. So here is the sound of Peter Dinklage.
There's a lot of hypocrisy going on, I gotta say, from being a, somebody who's a little bit unique.
The Game of Thrones star who has a form of dwarfism slammed Disney during an interview on Marc Maron's WTF podcast, saying that while he thinks the studio took one step forward casting the lead, they took two giant steps backward, perpetuating old stereotypes.
I was a little taken back by the very, very, they're very proud to cast a Latino actress as Snow White.
Yeah.
But you're still telling the story of Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs.
Sure.
Take a step back and look at what you're doing there. It makes no sense to me. You're progressive in one way and then, but you're still making that fucking backward story of seven dwarves living in a cave. What the fuck are you doing, man?
Following Peter's remarks, a spokesperson for Disney told ET in a statement, quote, "To avoid reinforcing stereotypes from the original animated film, we are taking a different approach with these seven characters and have been consulting with members of the dwarfism community. We look forward to sharing more as the film heads into production after a lengthy development period."
So I think a lot of little people that are actors and actresses would be worried about this and being like, wait, 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 was I consulted? I might want this role, right? Because they, they would argue, Peter Dinklage aside, I mean, there's not many little people that become big superstars. There's just not, there's not many opportunities for roles.
Right.
So Peter Dinklage is being blamed in a Daily Mail article for making it so the, the live action movie will have men, and I guess women as well, as, as these quote unquote dwarves, but they're not using any little people. They're claiming, a source connected with the production, which I love, explained that they will rather be like the trolls in Frozen or J R R Tolkien's hobbits. They'll have two legs, two arms and a face with eyes and nose and a mouth, but will not actually be human. And then the Daily Mail went so far as to show these pictures in an article. So this is supposedly Snow White, Rachel Zegler, and the dwarves. Now I see one, what appears to be a little person there, but what I would say are normal statured people, right? Not all little people.
And I imagine that what it CGI'd afterward or something?
Maybe.
Cause they look like normal people. They don't look like blobs with, with eyes and arms.
The other problem with this is this is all fake. That is not Rachel Zegler.
Oh.
So everyone's saying those pictures, like they reached out to Disney and Disney's like, those are not.
We don't know what that is.
Production.
Yeah.
And they're, they're requesting and demanding that the Daily Mail retract this article. But again, now they are interviewing little people who are outraged, saying, oh my God, this is all woke progressivism and blah. Wait, 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 it's not actually happening now. Do you disagree with Peter Dinklage's statement though? I mean, should the story of Snow White and the seven dwarves who live in whatever, a cave or wherever, uh, be told? Um, I would say, can't we come up with any new ideas? That's my first complaint. It's like, really? Do we have to do this?
Well, I think Disney's trying to do the live action of all of its, you know, classics, right?
Yeah, but it's annoying.
So is the question that we've outgrown dwarves, that it's not kind, that we're a better society now that we know that, you know, dwarves and putting li- little people in that position is not good for them, or it's not good to have that stereotype out there. And I think that's what Peter Dinklage was saying. It's like, you know, he's worked so hard to get beyond that where when he's an actor, I think I heard him say, and I don't think he said it in this clip, but he said, I want people to see me as a person, not just a little person, not.
Right.
I want people to see me as an actor with emotions and, you know, playing a character. It doesn't matter how tall the character is, I want you to see the human condition, basically.
Right.
And so, you know, does putting the seven, uh, Snow White, uh, Snow White and the seven dwarves kind of roll back to, oh, little people can only play dwarves, right?
Jim, and this is totally with sarcasm, so let me, he wrote that in there. Should we rename the title, Snow Identified As She Karen Anglo-Saxon Lineage And The Seven Vertically Challenged Them? Which is funny, I could take a joke. And Jim, that's really funny. Uh, you know, the damn story is called Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs.
And the Seven Dwarfs, right.
That's the name of the movie. That is the name of the book. That is the name of the story. I, for one, do not think they should change any aspect of it. I disagree with Peter Dinklage. Now, he doesn't like it because he comes from a different perspective, right? It's like all these dwarves and all the, you know, stereotypes about dwarves and, you know, under the bridge and, you know, all the, you know, what, we're only good to play certain roles. On the other hand, he himself has made a ton of money playing a little person. I mean, he was an elf in Bad Santa. Was it Bad Santa that he was?
No, that was, um, that was the movie called Elf. Remember?
Yes, 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 thank you.
It's like, oh, you're an angry elf.
There's a black actor that played, um, the, the, uh, yeah. But yeah, I just don't get how Peter Dinklage, who made money. I mean, yes, he wants to be seen as any other actor. And he is, he's an amazing actor. He's one of my favorite actors. I loved him in Game of Thrones. I've loved him in so many different things. He was also in, was he a liar liar with Jim Carrey?
I think of him as an actor though. I don't think of him as a tiny actor, right? I mean.
Well, yeah, but.
His characters kind of transcend being stereotyped into a little person role. He's more than a, a Wizard of Oz munchkin, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But I think that's also because of, because he's had success, right? But Doc writes in, this is like canceling small people, like the Hobbit movies using CGI instead of genuine small people. Exactly. I mean, if, if, if they don't make Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, that is a major opportunity for little people that is gone.
Yeah.
And why not? It seems, I hope this isn't offensive. It seems like a role made for them, right? It, it just is. And I'm, I'm trying to be mindful of what Peter Dinklage is saying and the perspective that he brings, because obviously as a little person himself, I, and definitely I'm sure before he made it big in Hollywood, he experienced probably discrimination and hateful words and typecasting because.
Right.
It's, I don't mean to be, you know, anti-progressive here, but there is something to be said with you look the way you look.
Yeah.
You look the way you look. And so if you're going for a role and it fits you to a T and you don't have to do CGI or wear different prosthetics or whatever, shoot, that's a role made for you. Is that wrong? Am I being discriminatory because I'm saying, look, let's make more, let's redo Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory and have more of these Oompa Loompas that are short people or little people, right? It doesn't seem wrong. It seems like giving these people an opportunity that they don't often get because they are typecast.
So there should, they should be, just to play devil's advocate here, they should be grateful to have the opportunity because there's so few opportunities for little people that they should just take what they're given. Instead of doing a Peter Dinklage, which is pushing beyond those opportunities into all the other opportunities that are open for him.
But he only got those opportunities by, by early on in his career, taking all the ones that we're talking about.
But what he's saying is now that we, we've pushed past that, that's old stuff now.
Pushed past that.
That.
Money and he can turn down roles. Everybody else should turn down roles.
That the image of little people is no longer, you know, the munchkin land. The, the image of little people is now, you know, Peter, Peter Dinklage with a sword, fighting and being fierce, whatever.
I still think that he is speaking from a place of privilege, right? He is speaking as someone who's already made it. And he's ignoring the fact that, I mean, does he really think that him saying these things is going to wake up freaking Hollywood? I mean, we can't even get Hollywood to stop, you know, typecasting older women, you know? I mean, really? We're going to jump to little people and be like, we're not, we're going to see you as really short people? That's not, I don't mean to be mean. I'm just saying, it's not going to happen.
And this is kind of a wild comparison. And I, I know that there's, the N-word is different than in our society than anything else. But what if it was, you know, pick a name, not Snow White, because I don't want to compare that. But it was, uh, you know, Sally Ann and the seven N-words.
Jesus.
We've outgrown that. And so what he's saying is, and the seven dwarves, we've outgrown that too. Maybe, maybe to little people.
The dwarves is the same as the N-word?
It's to them in their life.
I can't, I can't say it is or it isn't.
Either.
Um. It's so hard though, because if you are a little person and you want to make it in Hollywood, and you also want to pay your bills, because like we're talking about with the actor's strike, right? The SAG-AFTRA joining the Writers Guild, many people in Hollywood, even if they make a TV show or, or in a movie, they don't make a lot of money. They're still worried about where their next paycheck is going to come from. And so add on top of that, the fact that you're a little person and you're like, shoot, I am definitely going for the Snow White movie. And then all of a sudden, Peter Dinklage with his million dollars of being able to, you know, pick and choose the roles that he wants, is coming out and basically taking food out of your, off your table because he's like, you know what? We've gone beyond that. People, because of, you know, the success I've had, we should be, okay, but we're not there yet. And, and I think that it's a bit much to ask people to, to, to be at that level yet. I don't know, right? It seems really, really hard to, to buy what Peter Dinklage is selling at this point. I would love to get there. I would love if we never saw, it was just the acting. We could look beyond color and height and weight and all these things.
Right.
Not there yet. Not anywhere close to that.
People freaked out when we had a, a black Ariel.
Look, and then when Snow White comes out and she's a Latina woman that has a little bit of more melanin in her skin than the Snow White skin that's mentioned in the story, people are going to be like, wait, it's called Snow White, she ain't white. And the seven dwarfs, they're not dwarfs. What are we talking about here? I think this is the most anti-progressive stance I've had in a long time, but I understand not, I, I care less about a Latina playing Snow White because one, who cares? But two, I think the, the opportunity for little people is a lot less. And this is just anecdotal. I don't know the stats, but I'm going to imagine there are fewer little people getting roles in Hollywood than there are Latinas.
So are you saying then that if the only role that Latina woman, Latina women could get in Hollywood is ma- is maids, playing maids?
No, but what I'm saying is Latina women have more opportunities.
Someday maybe we'll think of you differently, Latina women, but today, today you're only the maid.
Because you're talking about, like, you're talking about the, the roles they can play. I'm saying literally just having a Latina on screen.
Yeah.
Is way more common than seeing little people on screen. That's what I'm saying. The opportunities for roles for Latina women is a lot more than the opportunity for roles for little people. That's all I'm talking about.
But I would argue that it didn't used to be, that it didn't used to be that way, because I've heard Latina actresses giving interviews, I think it was, I want to say it was Salma Hayek. And she was saying that at one point that her, she was told, and I forget whether it was by a director or an agent, that the only parts you're ever going to get with that accent
Right.
are going to be the cleaning lady. -are gonna be the cleaning lady.
Yeah. Absolutely. And John Leguizamo was talking about that as well. Like, a lot of people within the Latin community have talked about that, yeah.
And so we pushed past that. And now I think we've pushed past it in a beautiful way. I don't begrudge Peter Dinklage for wanting to push past that for little people as well.
Oh, absolutely. But again, we're talking about now.
Yeah.
So should we not make Snow White And The Seven Dwarfs because it's a step towards progress?
Don't you think, though, that it's important for him to call attention to those things? Otherwise, we don't ever get-
I'm not saying he shouldn't have said what he said, not at all. What I am saying is for him to say, why are you making this stupid story of Snow White And The Seven Dwarfs? I could imagine the other side of the little people actor saying, because I can have a job. Because then I can have a job. And, yeah. I, I hear what you're saying, though, Kim. I, I really do. I'm just saying, and not that we've reached that level with Latin actors at all. I'm not saying that, you know, it's equal and we're seeing, you know, the percentages of the population equal what we see on the screen. Not even close. But I would say there are definitely more Latinas, uh, Latino Hispanic actors on screen. Now, we're definitely seeing that progress, um, more than, you know what? I'll say this. It's just popped into my mind, because John Leguizamo, we're talking about that. You know, people are saying, if you want to see yourself on screen, what do you do? You make the movie you want to see. If you're an actor and you're of whatever stature, race, whatever, and they're not choosing you for the roles, you make the movie yourself. And back to the strike. That's why a lot of people are going on different mediums, streaming services, starting their own production companies, because they're not seeing their, their representation. So to Peter Dinklage, I would say this. Start a production company where you make movies with little people. And put them in the roles that have nothing to do with their stature, that it's not even addressed, right? It is, it is just, let's say, you know, uh, like a horror movie or a love story or a rom-com. And little, the fact that they're little people doesn't even play a role in it.
Right.
And that's that, that I would say is progress. That I would say is helping the little people community that want to break into Hollywood, because now you're hiring them for jobs and not basing it on a stereotype of them being a little person. So see, I just solved the whole entire problem.
Fixed it.
Right there in there. See?
Done.
I'm a problem solver, Kim. I'm a problem solver.
Talk through it, get to the solution.
There we go. That's the Nicki Madoro show.
Problems on the Nicki Madoro Show. We're doing it.
Oh, there we go. All right. Tim Seca is waiting in the wings. We will talk to him about the movies, not Snow White And The Seven Dwarfs. It's not coming out yet. Uh, but we'll talk to him about the movies that are available in the theaters and to stream right after Kim's news.
Now, from around the world to up your street, The Nicki Madoro Show presents news czar Kim McAllister.
Oh, I'm sorry to have to show you this picture of former President Trump. You know, every time you see his face, maybe you get a little itchy. I don't know. But attorneys for former President Trump are trying to have the prosecutor in the Georgia election probe disqualified now. His lawyers argue that Fulton County District Attorney Fannie Willis is using unlawfully obtained evidence in efforts to indict Trump. Two grand juries were empaneled this week to determine if the former president should be charged for attempting to have Georgia's 2020 presidential election results overturned. There is a new poll from the, here's a, I love this graphic. Signs of a toxic workplace. Gossip, employee turnover, poor communication, no one's motivated, there's no growth at the company, constant people fighting all over the place. Well, a new poll from the American Psychological Association shows about 20% of workers say they work in a toxic workplace. The poll also shows an increase in workplace harassment from 14% in 2022 to 22% this year. Those reporting a toxic work environment are three times as likely as those in healthy workplaces to experience mental health issues, because you know, people tend to stay until they find something else. And if they can't find something else, then they're just kind of wallowing in this toxic soup of a workplace that they should get out of. So.
Yep. Get out of it.
I'm trying to think back. We had gossip at KGO.
It, it was kind of part of the job.
Yeah. We didn't have employee turnover.
Well, I mean, behind the scenes, I'd say we had a lot of turnover.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, reporters, I mean, when we had the news, we, we lost some people.
Well, I mean, other than the, than the company laying people off.
Producers, definitely. Well, yeah, exactly. That's why. They kept laying people off. Absolutely.
There was poor communication. I was motivated.
You are. You're such a team player, Kim McAllister.
There was little to no growth.
Well, I, I mean, I would just like, I mean, personally, I grew a lot, but uh, constant conflict, I try to stay away from. Poor communication, I, I wouldn't say it so much as poor communication as BS communication. Like, they're telling you one thing and you're like, that is not what's happening here, but.
Well, The Nicki Madoro Show is not a toxic workplace. I'll have you know.
It is not.
We have none of this. We are motivated. We are communicators. There's no gossip here.
A little bit.
Maybe sometimes. How come gossip is always so bad? Come on now.
It's good. It's fun.
California is taking action, new action, to protect children from the extreme heat. So Cal Fire will give all schools $47 million to replace pavement with trees and plants for cooler spaces with more shade. First partner Jennifer Siebel Newsom calling it a win-win for students, communities, and for the environment as well. The first round of grants going to Los Angeles, Covina, San Francisco, and the counties of Contra Costa, Sonoma, Monterey, Santa Clara, and Alameda.
Yay. That's awesome.
Uh, this, and we talked about this a bit yesterday as well, this child sex trafficking bill moving forward in California.
Now it's moving forward. Yes. Good, good, good.
Yeah. An Assembly Committee passed it yesterday after voting for a second time. It had been blocked in the first attempt Tuesday, sparking backlash and causing the governor to step in. The senator who wrote the bill says selling children should not be an option. I mean, obviously. The legislation would classify the crime as a serious felony and prevent those convicted of getting released from prison early.
Yeah. Um, and I just, another promo Grammy note, because I had teased her. Emily Hoven with the Chronicles Editorial Board was unable to come on with us because she fell ill. So hopefully we can get her on next week, because she wrote about this bill and what it's doing, uh, you know, to California Democratic lawmakers versus Republicans and kind of why are Republicans leading on a bill that seems so obviously needed that nobody should be against? And the fact that Democrats were against it on this committee is just helping Republicans.
The Bay Area is under a spare the year alert today. High levels of smog expected due to this weekend's heat wave, so some could find it hard to breathe. An excessive heat warning now starts for inland cities where more than 3 million people are bracing for triple digits. Forecasters say the dangerous weather will last through Sunday with a widespread cooldown coming on Monday. So just a quick heat, heat, and then we get some relief, relief. Uh, more than a combined billion dollars is up for grabs in this weekend's major lottery game.
I gotta buy a ticket. I gotta buy it. I haven't bought one at all. I haven't bought any of the tickets at all.
Thank you for the pickles. Uh, we have, uh, tonight's Mega Millions jackpot.
Pregnant? Like, you're just eating random pickles during the show?
Well, they brought me a sandwich. Now I get the pickles. Oh, and they left the dog in. Hello, dog.
They should have brought it at 12:30. We could have had the whole Friday food segment. They gotta get it.
Little thing going on here. Um, but more than a billion dollars, uh, is up for grabs. So Mega Millions jackpot, 560 mil.
I'll take it.
Saturday night's Powerball jackpot, 875 million.
I'll take it.
You get to this point, it's gotta pop, right? Somebody's gonna win.
I want to win so badly. I swear to God. I'll, I'll still do this show.
Would, would, we'd still do it, right?
I mean, yeah, I just have no pressure to, I, I wouldn't ask you guys to do anything.
Stop asking for money. We'd give you money. We'd have giveaways.
I'd have giveaways. Yes.
If you're the most popular show on YouTube, we'd be like, how much money are we giving away today, Nikki? I don't know.
Exactly. That'd be so much fun. I would, I want that opportunity. Universe, God, are you hearing me? I want the opportunity, please.
Yeah. Just give, give, give. Um, and lastly, we have New Music Friday. Living up to its name with a new song by Billie Eilish and Post Malone.
Ooh.
Eilish's What Was I Made For is on the Barbie soundtrack, while Overdrive is a new single from Post Malone's forthcoming album. New albums by British rapper Jay Huss and singer-songwriter Mahalia are also dropping today as well.
Nice. I love me some Billie Eilish. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm Kim McAllister on The Nicki Madoro Show.
Thank you, Kim. All right. I do want to say some thank yous, because our super chat is live and you guys have been generous on this Friday. Pamela came in with a $10 super sticker to start off the show. Thank you, Pamela. Kathleen also with a $10 super sticker.
Kind. Thank you.
John Woodard, I'm gonna just give you your full name, John. Thank you. For the $20 super sticker. And then Calvin.
Thank you, John.
Loving our problem solving on The Nicki Madoro Show with a $20 super sticker. Thank you guys so very much. Again, click the thumbs up button. It's free and it helps us, uh, grow on YouTube. They just love it for some reason. I don't know. It's above my pay grade to know why, but just click the thumbs up button and it helps us out. All right. It is Friday, and so you know what time it is. It is time for a movie review with our friend Tim Seca. Hey, Tim, how are you guys?
Hey ladies, I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing good. I'm back from Hawaii, you know, we're just keeping the summer. Are you nice and cool where you are, Tim? Because it's gonna be a hot one today.
Well, it's a little cool now, but it's starting to, to, to-
To heat up.
Yeah, to heat up. Yeah, yeah. So are you, Nikki, are you one of these people? You know, everybody I know that has ever been to Hawaii or the islands say they don't want to come back.
No, I'm, I'm definitely, I can't wait to go back. I, I literally, all I kept saying, Tim, was I'm in a postcard, I'm in a postcard, I'm in a postcard. It is so beautiful. It is gorgeous. It, people are so nice. Um, I mean, it's paradise. It's literal paradise. So, I mean, how do you want to come back from that?
Yeah, really. That's what I hear. I've never been, so.
Oh.
Oh, Timmy.
New mission. We gotta get you there.
I know. Yeah, yeah. You gotta get, maybe you can, when you win the lottery, you can do a giveaway, Hawaii giveaway.
Huge trip to Hawaii.
Well, we're gonna be doing a Nicki Madoro Show on location.
Oh, that's even better.
Remember, radio stations used to do that, you know, when we had wuku money, you know?
Right, yeah, that's right. Yeah, definitely.
Those were the days. Okay, so let's talk some movies. It's gonna be hot, so it's a perfect weekend to go watch movies. Let's start with this one first, Biosphere.
Yeah, this is, yeah, Biosphere. I laugh every time I think of this movie. It's a dystopian, science fiction, cringe comedy. I don't remember the last time I saw one of those.
What's a cringe comedy to start off with? Is it just something that makes you awkward or they're awkward?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, yeah, it's like a, a comedy that makes you squirm and makes you feel uncomfortable, basically, yeah. And of all the films I've seen this year, this one is the hardest to talk about because its overall effect relies mostly on the way in which the story unfolds. So the least you know about it, the better. But what I can say about it is the plot, it, it's the last two people on earth. Two guys, played by Mark Duplass and Sterling K. Brown.
Well, that's not gonna last very long then, but okay.
Well, well, hmm, well.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Well, anyway, they're living in this dome, right? The Biosphere, the title. And as the story progresses, progresses, we gradually learn how these two guys came to be the last two people on earth. And in this dome, and what their relationship to each other was. And this movie is a kick. Uh, I can't remember the last time I reacted to a movie like, like I did to this one. It was like, what?
So fun. Like, you loved it?
Well, I did. I loved it. I, but I'm just going, oh, no, please, God, don't go there. Oh, please, no, no, don't. And, and then it does. And it makes you squirm.
Oh, I love it.
But in a good way. It was, it was, uh, it hit all my sweet spots, the way a good movie should. And again, so much of that enjoyment stemmed from how the story unfolded. It kept going in very unexpected places that were not only hilarious, but to be honest, a little uncomfortable. I'm glad I saw this movie alone because my reactions to it were really personal. And I don't know what it would have been like. I don't know if it would have been worse, or, or maybe not worse, maybe more uncomfortable, seeing it with one of my female friends or one of my male friends.
Oh, I gotta watch it now. I mean, this comes so up my alley.
Yeah, no, I think, uh, yeah, if, yeah, it's, uh, I, I can't recommend it enough. It was, it was such a surprise. I really, really loved it. It was terrific. Yeah.
And so you're saying this is in theaters and video on demand, so I could watch it at home?
Yes, you can. And you may want to watch it alone. Uh, unless you want to risk it and watch it with, you know, frie- uh, family and friends. I don't know.
That is so funny. All right. Well, I'm gonna check it out. That's awesome. All right. So, and I love Sterling K. Brown. I, I absolutely-
Oh, he's fantastic. The acting in this movie, it, it's, it's like a two-hander. It actually could have been a play, because it really-
It's just them, right?
Well, you know what it is, too? It's a really, really deep discussion of, uh, like friendship and gender and, and identity and intimacy and sexuality. And in Biosphere, these things are all blurred. So it really hits you, it, it, it hurts your head, but in a good way. It's profound. Yeah, no, it's really, really good.
I'm intrigued. All right. Next up is Black Ice.
Yeah. Nikki, last week, Kim and I talked about a documentary called The League. It was about the Negro Baseball League. And this movie, Black Ice, is also a documentary, but with hockey as, uh, the sport in question. And what Black Ice is, or rather what it's about, what, what it does, is it documents a history of racism and racist patterns that span generations, uh, through these individual stories, uh, of all these players, uh, that played in the NHL, Black Indigenous and People of Color, hockey players, uh, in a predominantly white sport. So it's spoken, and its focus is on Canada, Canadian hockey and the NHL. And the movie begins with a disclaimer that the following film you're about to see may contain offensive language and images that may be triggering to some audiences, which was good, a good idea, because a lot of what follows is really offensive and shocking. The, the historic and even current racism of the NHL still on display even now, not only among the fans, you know, they're watching these games, but the team owners, the players, and the parents of the players, with, with none of the racists demonstrating any kind of culpability whatsoever. So it's a really interesting story. It's really interesting history. Uh, and it's a damning testament, which argues that when examining the history of professional hockey, a very disturbing picture emerges suggesting institutional racism and minority exclusion. It's, it's more shocking than you would think. You would think we would have gotten over some of this stuff, but no. It, it's really, it's really like come into a, a new kind of focus and simmer to the, you know, surface and, ugh, anyway.
And I see LeBron James is what, an executive producer on that?
Yes, he is. Yeah, yeah, he is. And it's, it's playing exclusively in AMC theaters. So, uh, anyway, it would make a great double bill with, uh, Black Ice and The League. That would make a great double bill.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. But anyway, worth seeing, definitely. The movie itself, it's a bit academic, a little repetitive, but it's, it's essential viewing for anybody interested in the Black experience in Canada or sports history. Yeah.
Wow. All right. Let's move on to The Miracle Club. I don't see any actress on here that I don't like.
Nikki, this is a movie for you.
Oh, okay, good.
As you, as you have often, I think more than Biosphere, although I don't know, maybe Biosphere like reveals a layer of you that we don't know about. But anyway, this, as you have often admitted on the show, right, you love to cry at movies.
I do. Love it, love it, love it.
Well, and you were raised Catholic too, right?
Yes, I was.
Well, I think if you're either one of those Catholics or a sucker for emotional stories, you'll love this movie, The Miracle Club. It's, it's, it's a, it's like a dramedy. Takes place in Dublin, Ireland, and the year, I believe it was 1967. It's basically about three women, played by Maggie Smith, Kathy Bates, and Laura Linney, who make a pilgrimage to Lord's France, to the site where the young peasant girl Bernadette Subaru in 1858 allegedly had a vision of the Virgin Mary. It's a big tourist spot now, kind of commercialized. And yeah, if it weren't for Maggie Smith, Laura Linney, and Kathy Bates headlining this picture, just based on the title, The Miracle Club, I probably would have passed on it. And then, and in the beginning, I'm going, hmm, this had better kick in. And, but kick in it does. It's a story, it's a story about religious belief, religious faith. It's about secrets. It's about, oh, God, it's about the lies we tell ourselves in order to get through the day. The shame, the guilt, and the, and the hatred we harbor inside of ourselves that eats us up and prevents us to fully love ourselves or anybody else for that matter. But it's ultimately a story about forgiveness and the power of forgiveness. And yeah, I know that sounds corny, but these actresses really sell it. It's about miracles too. But not necessarily the kind of miracle we think defines that word, miracle.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that surprised me about the film, uh, that made it kind of touching to me. I, I don't know. This is kind of strange, but a, a lot of times movies about religion and faith, they tend to mock religion. And this movie did this thing where it presents religion in a way that transcended the surface attraction of religion to go a little deep, uh, a little deeper into the psychology of religion and religious belief and religious faith. And it's done in a way, it kind of criticizes religion. Well, no, it questions religion, but not in a way that takes a person's religious beliefs away from them. In that way, it's a very kind movie, but it's also a deep movie because it's sort, it, well, it sort of debunks the whole notion of lords and the miracle of lords. And yet, if you don't want to go there because of where your own religious faith takes you, you don't have to. So it's respectful of whatever a person's religious beliefs are, but also gets you to look deeper if you choose to do so. So I recommend, uh, The Miracle Club. And, and really, if you're gonna watch this movie, take a box of Kleenex.
Ooh, you know I love crying over movies. That, that actually, yeah, that does sound really, really good. Okay, The Miracle Club.
Yeah, and Maggie Smith, Kathy Bates, and Laura Linney, I mean goddesses all these women.
I love them. I love it.
I've come to the right place to advertise this one, my friend.
Exactly. That's what he said. He's like, yeah, I love me a tearjerker. I even, I love tearjerker books. Like, I, I literally look up these things. I want a movie or a book that will make me cry. I just, I love it. It just, I love feeling emotion. Exactly. All right. Our final one is Mr. Carr And The Knight's Templar.
Yes.
Interesting title.
Well, we've saved the worst till last. I'm now in my hand away.
It kind of looks that way.
Well, you know, yeah, well, the good news about it is that it's all, it's accessible. Because if you have Netflix, you can watch it now, because it's streaming on Netflix. But the bad news is that it's really awful.
Don't bother, huh?
Well, yeah, Mr. Carr and the Knights Templar. I like the title. I think it sounds kind of cool. It's mostly a family friendly Polish movie. It's based on this Polish cult favorite book series, which I had never heard of, published mostly in the 1960s and 70s. It's about a historian traveling all over the globe, hunting down lost artifacts, and in search of, well, in this movie, anyway, he's in search of a hidden treasure. I think it was called the Cross of Demolay. And he's doing this in a car, an automobile, which doubles as a boat. And, and the plot all boils down.
Sounds like an old Disney type of movie, right?
Well, yeah, but, yeah, it's worse than that. Well, the plot all boils down to this guy, this, this, you know, globetrotter going after this treasure. And along the way, he joins forces with a journalist, the daughter of a man who was killed while working for him, a weird medicine woman shaman, and a group of misfit kids. It's the Da Vinci Code crossed with Goonies, crossed with Indiana Jones, crossed with James Bond. That's the only way I can describe this movie. Now, if that sounds interesting, I mean, it kind of sounds interesting to me, but this wasn't a good movie. I mean, they had good ideas, but hardly any of it works, because it's, it's overstuffed for one. And for another, you're constantly being pulled out of the story by all of the screenplay's obviousness. I mean, it's so, it's all very predictable, very heavy handed. It's insanely contrived, and it overreaches in its attempts to appeal to a really wide audience. And in so doing, it appeals to no audience at all. And the other thing I hated, I couldn't get past, and I can never get past in these kinds of movies, this is why I like English subtitles in foreign language movies, is that this is a Polish movie. It's been dubbed in English, so the mouth movements of the actors delivering that. I mean, they don't match the English dubbing at all. You just want to, you know, you want to go, you know, this is a bad enough movie. Did you have to put us through this, too?
Yeah, I would much rather read than look at mouths that aren't.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I really, I dreaded doing this. And 40 minutes in, I said, I am gonna bail. But being the dedicated, committed professional that I am, I stuck with it. But it's an hour and 50 minutes of my life I'm never gonna get back.
Oh, my goodness. All right. So, so no on Mr. Carr and the Knights Templar. But we did really like Biosphere, The Miracle Club, and Black Eyes.
Yeah, yeah. So three out of four ain't bad. Yeah.
That ain't bad, my friend. All right. Well, thank you for your reviews. Stay cool, Tim. We'll talk next week. All right?
All right. All right. You guys have a good weekend.
Bye, Tim.
Bye, Tim. Yeah, dude. I think I'm gonna have to do Biosphere tonight, because it's video on demand.
You're gonna watch it with your husband and watch him cringe, aren't you?
Yeah. Well, I don't think, I will, I'm really curious on even if I'm gonna cringe. You know me, I have a very twisted sense of humor, too. But I'm so curious on what actually would make me cringe. Yeah, I don't know. I love what Amy said about Mr. Carr, chitty chitty bang bang on steroids.
Funny that she mentioned it, because I was thinking chitty chitty bang bang. Yeah. I did not like that movie. I know a lot of people loved it.
Neither did I. I don't, I don't like that whole, like, you know, the special effect of it all. I didn't like it. But it was kind of the old style of Disney that was kind of popular back then. Um, all right.
The way you described it, like Indiana Jones, and you know, you're kind of like.
Didn't work.
Yeah, no.
No. Um, I am looking forward to still. I think Barbie comes out next weekend, though, right? I think it's next week.
When Barbie comes out.
But I'm not, I'm not even lying. Everyone's been talking about Barbie and Oppenheimer so much. I swear to God, that movie Oppenheimer was in my dream last night.
Really?
It was the weirdest dream. I just woke up, and it just, I kept, the dream was about me going to see the movie Oppenheimer. Not like I have any idea what, you know, I know what the movie's about, but I've never seen it, obviously. But yeah, it's like in my dreams. I have to go see it. I think it's because it popped up into my dreams, because they're doing that double header. Did you see the news that they're doing?
Oppenheimer.
Yeah, Barbie and Oppenheimer. So.
Which is kind of a weird, two weird movies to put together.
No, I would watch Oppenheimer, and then I would go watch Barbie to make myself feel better, because obviously.
So it is in theaters Barbie on July 21st.
Randy says July 21st. Yeah. There we go. So I'm sure Tim Seca will have all the reviews for us. I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say he's gonna give us two thumbs up on both, because Oppenheimer's early reviews have been raving, rave reviews for Oppenheimer. And I'm just gonna see Barbie no matter what. I don't even care. I don't even care if Tim says it's not a good movie. I want to see it. All right, guys. Thank you so much to everybody that's been donating during the show. A reminder, you can donate to our super chat, even if you watch it on replay. Calvin with 20 bucks, because we solved the problem with Peter Dinklage.
Thank you, Calvin.
John with a $20 super sticker. Thank you so much, John. We appreciate it. Kathleen, $10 super sticker. Each and every dollar matters to us, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
And of course, Pamela started us off with that $10. And I love people that start us off and get the ball rolling. Again, click the thumbs up button and show your support for the show by becoming a adorable and a monthly Patreon subscriber. Just go to thenickymadoroshow.com, thenickymadoroshow.com. And please, any amount, we appreciate it, and we really do depend on it. So have a great weekend. Stay cool, and we'll talk Monday. Bye.